I've drawn the short straw. So first of all, thanks. Thanks for everybody that's turned up, that's come to find out information in regards to the project that we've been working on for quite a while with the city now. We're delighted to be partnered with the city in this project. And obviously, the purpose here is to provide a state-of-the-art performance building for our kids and facility for our kids and better soccer facilities than what we have now. We're looking to create an environment for boys and girls at all levels, within the immediate and surrounding communities that can access the facility. So it's bringing the city together, bringing the community together, and bringing different communities together from outside Murrieta as well. And obviously, the aim of the project is to provide each athlete all the tools to help them develop and reach their full potential without having to go outside the city, which is what we've got at the moment. We've got a lot of elite athletes that are attracted outside the city because people have got better facilities. People have got better areas for working on and training on, and we want to change that and bring that here so that the kids that are staying within here, the coaches that are working in here, have got something to be proud of. And we build something that the whole city can use as a focal point and be proud of, that they can call their own. This isn't just for us. It enhances the whole environment. We as a club, you know, obviously are committed to providing viable pathways and fostering a playing environment which has high professional standards as well. So this won't be any ordinary facility. This will be a facility built on experience that people are bringing, that have worked in high-standard environments, that they can bring in experience, give the kids that experience. A lot of them don't get that chance to experience it. They see games on the Premier League, they see games on the TV, they see different YouTube things, but they don't actually get to experience what that's about. We want to give them that experience. We want kids that you don't have to push out the car when you bring to training. We want kids that jump out the car to come to training, that want to be in an environment that they're going to flourish in. And then the last thing is, you know, with working with the city, which we're proud to do that, and we're grateful for everything that the city's doing. Obviously, the new facility is further proof of what we as a club, from what we started in 2012. I think we started with 16 teams in 2012. We're at 58 teams. We've got all the elite levels in this valley that other clubs don't have. We put more kids through college, both on the girls' and the boys' programme. We've got kids playing at professional clubs. We've got 16-year-olds signing four-year professional deals at LA Galaxy. We've got kids at New England, we've got kids at Houston, we've got kids playing in the national team. We've got kids going down to San Diego Wave, the new women's professional team. It goes on and on and on of the pathways that these guys and, you know, for the guys, the coaches that are sat here, and this is all down to the work that these guys are doing. And if we can give them that environment to do even better, then that's what we're trying to provide. And again, it's not down to one person, this is down to a collective group with the city, with the staff, with the staff at MSA. And the last thing I'll say is, it's about these. It's about the kids. That's all that matters to us. We've got coaches here who are not interested in themselves, not interested in furthering what they're doing. They're interested in providing the kids the best we can give them. And a facility will enhance what we're doing. What I'd like to do is introduce you to Jarrett Ramaya, who works with the city, who's been one of the integral people that we've dealt with. And we're proud to be partners with him, and we're proud with what he's doing. He's as invested in this as we are. And, you know, with people like Jarrett and the city behind us, this thing's going to get done. This thing will get done. I know there's been skeptics, I know there's been doubters. It's been seven years since we started this. There's been delays in it. But we're certain this is going to get done. And I would advise you, if you're here and you have questions, there's going to be a presentation. If you have questions, please ask. Please don't walk out of here wondering, "I wonder if, what about this, what about that?" If you have a question, ask the hard questions. Ask the hard questions, you'll get the answers. And then you can walk out of here being informed of what's going off. And then we're not getting misinformation, or people are making things up, or people are doing... You're actually getting it from the horse's mouth, and that's the best information we can provide. And hopefully, people will be satisfied and get behind this as we will, and make sure that we provide something that's going to be here for a long time. And that's the biggest thing for me, is this place is going to be here for new coaches coming in, new people running it, new kids coming in, and hopefully, players that are progressing through now, hopefully, their kids are going to come in here as well. And they can do it, and we can just keep that cycle going where we're pushing kids through a programme that is changing kids' lives. And if we can do that, I think everybody will be satisfied. I know the coaches will be satisfied. And that's the way we get our satisfaction, seeing the kids progress. So Jarrett, if I can turn it over to you.
Well, welcome, everyone. My name is Jarrett Ramaya. I'm the Deputy Director for the Development Services Department, and I'm very happy to have all of you as families, athletes and coaches. And that's accurate, is that this is about the youth, your future. And so as I go through what might sound as gobbledygook, I don't want you thinking that we're not focused on the real prize, which is healthy communities and making sure that our youth have the advantages that you could find almost in any other city. And so I'm going to go through a presentation, and explain some of the things that we did, a big hiccup that recently had, and how we got back on the horse, and how we're going to tackle this. But I'm going to provide about 19 slides. And again, some of this information, I'm going to get into the weeds. That's what we call is getting into a lot of detail. And so if you're feeling that space cadet moment about, "What the heck is this guy talking about?", that's fair. Let's go through the Q and A. But forgive me if some of this information is beyond scope. I'm just going to try to give you the truth serum on what we're dealing with. But again, I'll never forget why I got here, working with Rob, Zach and Steve. All they've ever talked about is the youth, very passionate, but they're also very skilled. And so although I'm going to go through a lot of jargon, I hope this will make some sense. But again, what we learned in COVID was the public needed government more than ever, but they didn't trust government more than ever. So I'm that guy that has to explain to you what we're doing here. So again, any questions before we begin? Okay. Forgive me, I'm going to go through some slides. And then, of course, we have a microphone for speakers. And again, there's no rush tonight. There's no silly question. Even if you're nervous, I'd like to hear from you, or have someone else ask you a question. And even if a question comes up to you later on, I have my business cards. You can email me, you can call me, we can chat about that. Because a lot of times when you sync information in, you need some time to process it and come back. So again, tonight is communication, but again, we want to make sure that it's very clear what we're doing here. And so again, on this slide, what we're talking about is the location of Los Alamos Sports Park. This is phase two. So let me just, let's get our orientation. Where are we talking about here, right? So on this slide, you're going to see the current location of phase one. This is a Google shot, so you can see the labelling on that. I've labelled Whitewood Road to the north. We have our high school off of Clinton Key further to the north. And this project is near Hunter Road, near Ruth Ellen Glen. Everybody kind of have a good, strong understanding of where it's at? I'm sure you've been to the existing Los Alamos Sports Park, so it's just north of that location. To be more specific, the property outlined in the red line is immediately north from the existing facility. That's what we called phase two of the Los Alamos Sports Park. So we're going to be concentrating on this area. Let's go back in time. The image on the left is the original plan for the existing sports park that's been built. The image on the right was more of a utopian idea we had at the time. It had a pond, it had a lot of other ancillary things. That is what we're going to replace with this project. So we're not building that facility, we're going to replace it with a soccer facility. But I just want to let you know that there have been plans that were approved by City Council. Only half the project was built, and so we'd like to do something better with phase two. What's the project? We know that we need to focus on at least seven soccer fields. Practicing, tournaments, as we said, what, 56 teams? That's a lot of kids. So we need a lot of space, right? Trying to go with three or four fields is not going to work for the needs of these athletes. So we know that we need minimum seven fields. We're going to have like a concession area, bathrooms, of course, and other parking areas. And I'll show you in a plot plan a little bit later exactly what we're talking about. Again, coming back to the slide on where the location is. And again, if you're going to permit a project, there's a moment where you need a grading permit. And why that's important is the minute you stick that shovel in the dirt, you might have an impact. And under California state law, you have to analyse what could be affected by doing the grading. And so let's get into that detail right now. So again, for the city to get a grading permit, we have to sometimes jump through some hoops and get permission from other governments. So let me get into the detail as to why we need some fancy permits to move forward with this project. So years ago, when we met with Regional Conservation Authority, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, they said, "Hey, okay, you guys can come back in, but of course, you'll have to do a lot of surveying." The purpose of this image is to show you that as a baseline, we take into calculation what the existing environment is. And so we know that it's got some inventory, it's got a creek running through it, and some other things here. That's a cute little picture of a gnat catcher that's protected by state law. It's a threatened species, and so we have to map that. And it also lists all the other species that we had to look at. We had leaf-bellied avirio, bird, southwestern willa flycatcher, bird. Vernal pools, do you know what those are? They're like small little puddles. And what's interesting is, sometimes you'll find fairy shrimp in there. So birds deposit things, and you actually have some life in those vernal pools. So we have about seven of those on the property. We have gnat catcher, another songbird, western burrow owl, another important species. And then we have the Stevens kangaroo rat. So those are the potential species that we know that might be on the project site. What the results were, forgive me, not to minimise this, but what we found was we have a bird, a toad and a pocket mouse. To simplify that, that means those three species are protected by state and federal law. But what's good is we narrowed it down as to what's important on the site. Aquatics, we have to map all the hydrology. So we have a primary stream that goes to the site that's protected as conservative water of the US. So we have to avoid that area. So a lot of times you're having to show, "Well, I won't impact that area, can I avoid it?" And that helps you to get through the process. So if you can see from these slides, you can look at the plant types, the avian, the birds, aquatics, which can be frogs and everything else, and, here you go, and the mammals. So based upon all of that information, then we come down with the base footprint of where can we put seven fields if we're in an area that is so highly sensitive? Well, that's the purpose of this map, and so it might be grainy. But if you could see the hatched areas, those would be where we could accommodate seven fields. And so we had this information ready to go with our surveying, which was between 2019 and 2022, well done by our consultant. And this is what we came up with. And so this is a lot of detail on the map, but if you can see the little small soccer balls, those delineate the seven soccer fields. In purple are the parking lot areas. We have some pedestrian walkways that will migrate through the site, and then we'll have like a concession stand area and some other areas. What we're factoring is that to cross Whitewood Road, we'll probably have a lighted crosswalk, because that is a fast road there, if people are not behaving. And so we want to be careful in that, is that do we have line of sight? Do we have the speed survey that we can put a lighted crosswalk across that area? We think it might be best to put it in the centre instead of coming down to Hunter Road, because people will just run across, and we've got to be careful in that. But that is another attribute of the project. All right, so we took all that information, and we sat down with the three governments that have control over the permits that we need to acquire. This is Regional Conservation Authority with the leaf, the state, Fish and Wildlife, is with the bear, and the feds, the US Fish and Wildlife Service, has the duck and the fish. You don't see any humans on there, right? That's what their laws are about, protecting species. There's no mention of us in those documents, so that's where we have to face the music. But we brought to them the protocol surveys, avoidance areas, restoration areas, and we thought we were good. We spent a lot of quality time and money getting that information. And so when we met with these agencies, we were shocked and caught off guard by something that what we felt was unrelated that they threw in our lap. And this is that space cadet moment I'm going to have to walk you through, that this again is a lot of law, and when we're looking at fine youth growing and becoming very athletic and moving on with their lives, that's where things can seem very incongruent. All right, so back in 2003, the city, along with 17 other cities and a county, we had to sign on to the Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan. What is that? That's a way that a region shows how that we can take into account the migration patterns of avian, mammal, and other species throughout an area, both built and unbuilt environment. If you look at these cells, they call them, some are along Murrieta Creek on the bottom, right? And so you'll find birds flying up and down the creek. But the Los Alamos area is where you see the pink and the blues and the yellows. And in the eyes of the agencies, all the land that's in that area should mainly be subjected to open space requirements. And so our job as city staff is that each project that comes in, whether it's a house, or residential tract, or a commercial business, each of those cells that's coloured, we have to show how we're avoiding a certain amount of the percentage of that cell. And so what happened was, the agency said, "Well, by the way, we did some math for you, city, and you're a little off. In this particular area, 238 acres off, meaning over time, since 2003, you were supposed to reserve more open space." Now, we have a very strong difference of opinion. We feel that there was some built environment. We had some projects that were already approved and mapped. And so we tried to have another conversation with them to say, "But, but, 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 your original plan already had a lot of stuff that would have made it impossible for us to meet these requirements." That fell on deaf ears. We got a little political at that moment, tried to push hard, but we had to come back to this issue, is, is there a gap in the acreage that we were supposed to put in open space versus the plan? And guess what? This project became subject to that. The primary importance of this area is that there's what's called Core Two. And a core area is where you have the most prescient of species. So you have leaf-bellied avirio, California gnat catcher, you have mammals. And this is the area that we were supposed to make sure had this gilded open space corridor. So if you're a mammal walking, a bird flying, you can get to and from. Although we have a strong difference of opinion, what do you notice right in the middle of the Core Two is the soccer project location, right? So you see a lot of built environment, and they're asking that we go through a much more elaborate process to say, "We did not match the plan as we signed on to in 2003, and so therefore, we're going to have to make up the gap." Well, where would you make up the gap? We're going to have to make it up on the west side of town, and that's going to take a lot more analysis. So let me get a little bit more into that detail. I did the math myself, so these are percentage values in the cell areas. They're right in the way of the math, but they're wrong in the way on how we got here. And so we thought maybe we should take a legal angle. We think we'd just get stuck in the courts for a long time and not show progress. So we've tried to find other ways to tackle this, but it keeps pivoting us back to the original conversation, which is, "How do we get these soccer fields? How do we get a permit so we can grade?" That's really what we need to do. So we went back and met with the agencies, showed them what we're dealing with, and we got a little bit of cooperation, meaning some insights into how we can come back. So again, what are the next steps? After all that gobbledygook I just shared with you, we as a city have done everything we can, but we've got to play ball, right? And so what this means is, those same three governments, regional, state and federal, and we're local, we're going to go through two application requirements. One's called a criteria refinement. You're basically taking the plan as approved and changing it. Then we get in another fancy term, a joint project review, a JPR. And that's where we're showing how that's balancing, that's a smart plan. We have to do a public review sequel document, and then that will take about two years to do, unfortunately. But that's the plan that we have moving forward. So the goal is, can we come back through with a criteria refinement to say, "Okay, governments, it might not be all good in this area, but how do we balance the whole city?" And we think that we have the ability to get to that point because we have some other friends. Congressman Daryl Issa asked us if we needed some help, and we said, "Yeah, we could use your help on this major issue here." And he wrote a letter on behalf of the city, and the letter is very unique, where it says, "Hey, feds, I want monthly check-ins on this thing." That's very nice, because often you don't get a pressure point from someone like that. And so as you think about the feds to the feds, we really appreciate this letter. And so if we feel that there's not cooperation, we're going to exercise our relationships. And so I want to let you know that we've gone to legal, we've also gone to some very important elected officials, and we're trying to find our friends that will help us push this hard, because you do need friends in this type of situation. To do this, of course, we're partnering with the Soccer Academy. GLA is Glenn Lucas and Associates. So when we asked the agencies, "Who the heck can pull this off? Who's done this before?", and only one name came back. And there's someone I actually have worked with quite a lot. And so GLA is a biological firm. They're able to work on the more complex permitting requirements. And this is something they actually did in the northern part of Riverside recently. They got a criteria refinement done in a pretty good timeframe. And so we do know that there's someone that has built trust with the governments that we have to work with, and we want to work with them so that we can get a deliverable. Again, Glenn Lucas with their experience and their concern, they really want to work on this project because they know that the emphasis is sports and recreation. That's something that they also appreciate. They know the biological world, but they know that they have to fight hard for us, right? And with that, that's my presentation. But again, I'm sensing I might have lost a few people. I know we had a few people walk in a few minutes a little late. So I would like to see if there's some questions maybe that you have, or I can go over some of the slides again, because I know that's a lot. I'm just throwing back over it with you. But again, is the city in partnering with our club, we're going to keep pushing on this one. This is actually the most important project on my plate. And I'll gladly work on this if it takes two years. It's going to take two years. But I just want to underscore that this is very important to the city. Back in January, when we had our City Council Goals Workshop with our City Council, this was on the list as being extremely important. They continue to fund the things that we need. And what will happen? So let's say two years go by and we get the criteria refinement. That gets us the ability to apply for the federal permits. We get those. We pull our own grading permit and we get the dozers out there. So again, the goal is to get the grading permit so that we can shape that site, and then we'll talk about better things, getting the green carpet out, getting the lights up, getting the bathrooms out there. But I just want to let you know that these folks have been working hard. We've been working hard, but I don't think any of us could have ever foreseen that kind of surprise. And they didn't just surprise this part of the city. They surprised us in other parts of the city that we're dealing with also. So I'm the guy that's going to be working diligently with those three governments. It's something that I can do, it's something that I want to do. And I just wanted to be available to you hard-working parents and your students, or your sons and daughters, on any concerns or questions that you might have. Because again, I work for government, so I know a lot of times it's hard to communicate what's real to the public. But everyone in this building that works at the City Hall, we do care a lot about the public. That's why we come to work, and this room is where we do the city's business. And so is this anyone's first time here at City Hall? Oh, it is? Okay. You know, we have an Easter egg hunt coming up out in the amphitheatre, which is new. And if you ever needed to drop off your voting ballot, or if you ever need to check on a business licence, come on down. You know, I think since COVID, we haven't seen a lot of the public, and we kind of miss you. And so we have friendly staff, so if you ever have other needs of the city, please come down. This is a great place for the city's business folks to do their business, so. First question?
I just had you here to help us with planning permits, too?
I do work in the planning department, so I'm all ears on what that might be, so, yeah. But again, it's been a while since we've communicated with you all. I just wanted to be available today for any concerns or questions. Because again, I know how hard you work. I have a 12-year-old daughter. My wife and I bust our back every day, like you all, to put a little bread on the table and to maybe hope that their future's going to be gold. And I know exactly what you guys are looking for and why you get up every morning. Again, it's not fun to talk about what the other government's opinions are, but I'm the person that doesn't give up, and I really want to see this in finality. So that's really my messaging, is that for the future, if you ever have concerns or questions about this process, please reach out to me. I know you've got your compadres here that have been working with you a long time, but this is sometimes the mess between governments. And I'm proud to work in Murrieta because we're pretty tough here. We get what we want at the end of the day. It's just that we have to play smart soccer. And, oh, I think this hand went up first. So, you know, we do have a recorded hearing tonight, and for the members of the public that might be watching it at home, could we mind having people come up to the microphone? If you're too shy, I can do the old run around the... If you're too shy, I could hand you a microphone, but it'd be great for you guys to ask those questions.
I just have a question as far as the refinement process. You're looking at 24 months. Now, could they prolong that? Is that a finite period, or could it be less? Could it be more? And then what would the process, and the permit process, how long could that possibly take?
Great. No, thank you for that question. So how do we know that 24 months is the legit? I took that schedule from the feds themselves. I went to their website and I said, "Oh, you guys mapped this out for me." So when we met, I said, "Is that what you're going to commit to?" So as long as the city plays ball and we do our tennis and we provide the submittals, they're supposed to honour their own schedule and requirements. Now, the question is, what if things fall off? If it's them slipping, that's the Daryl Issa letter, right? Is, "Hey, you guys were supposed to be at the city. Why is there a delay?" I think that's the pressure point that we want to do. Now, God forbid, there's a lot of other delays. I have a lot of other bosses here that I think are going to kick me in the side, and we're going to go camp out at those offices. So that's where the political pressure becomes very important, because two years is a long time for a family to wait for anything. I mean, some kids graduate and go out to college in two years. So time is of the essence, but that is the agreement, is we'll play ball governments, but it's 24 months. And so that's really what it needs to be, is a finite 24-month, where myself is accountable to the governments, and they're accountable to the city. And I think that's how we have to map it. I've already promised these gentlemen that they'll be kept in the loop. We'll be having monthly meetings with them. So if they see something slipping, they'll also be in my ear, or we'll be communicating with the other governments. So I have enough people that I think strongly care about the product type that we're working on. Now, getting the permit from the feds is the most important start. Then we have to do the plan and programming of the site itself. I think we can start that in the fall of 2025, so we don't have to wait for the permits to do other things. So as we get closer to that end game, we'll be doing other things on the site. And I think by then, you know, we'll talk about bathrooms and other types of important amenities for you all. Hopefully, that answered the question, so. Sir?
Thank you, Jarrett Caston-Kline. Appreciate the presentation. You mentioned certainly the commitment and the partnership between the city and MSA. You mentioned City Council goals and budget. If you know off the top of your head, you know, what has the city spent already? Because I think, you know, as a member of the public, I think that shows the commitment from the city. What has the city already spent in terms of towards this project to date? And then you know, CIP budget moving forward, you know, what do we have? Capital Improvement Program. This is a project on the city's capital improvement program. Maybe speak to that if you can, because I think that sends a message to the public of just how committed city staff and our city council is. Thank you.
No, thank you, Kasten. I don't have the precise figure written down, but I would say that we spent at least a few hundred thousand dollars already on this survey for the biology. That's very intensive because take for example a vernal pool. You got to study that both in the dry months and the wet months. So you got to do two surveys in a year. Birds, they're only available in the springtime, right? Mammals, you have to do intensive tracking. The gnat catchers themselves, they found five pair. They had to like catch them, tag them, release them, track them. So that's very intensive. A gnat catcher survey can be $15,000 on its own accord. So we took all that hard cash, which is from our general fund, right? That's where we have to be really, really careful. That's the, that's the green money from the public. So a very important question because you always want to make sure your government is spending your money smartly, right? Now, we still had $47,000 left over from the initial thing. We're rolling that into the Glenn Lucas contract. I think the totality of the Glenn Lucas contract will be about 260,000 to do more surveys, to write up a couple of pretty strong documents. And then staff like me are subsidized. I don't bill to anything. We're just, we just do this stuff because that's how it is. And I'm going to be sharing some of the costs, like the environmental write-up. That might cost 45,000 for a consultant. I'll write that up. It's just on staff time. So there's ways. And then there's also grants because if you've seen the governor, they started hacking the budget again. Was a couple of years ago, they're bragging how much money they have. Now they got nothing. They're hacking all of our programs, right? So we'll have to be careful because a lot of cities are having difficulty raising revenue right now. We'll get past that, but we'll also be looking at grant opportunities, Kasten, to make sure. Because that's really the mantra right now is the government. We got to be careful. We can't spend the public's money on everything. We got to subsidize that with things. So there are grant opportunities out there that we'll apply for that we hope can help with this endeavor. But very good question, Kasten, because you know, the beginning of the year, when city council sets the goals for the year, we are also talking about the costs. And so as Kasten talks about the capital improvement program, our CIP, that's the infrastructure of the town. And so if you ever wonder, how'd they plan that road? How'd they plan that overpass? That's our CIP. That's the big stuff that we plan, program and pay for. I think that budget will be fine on the side. This will be the money that city council allocates. We'll probably go to city council this summer to augment the contract and that'll be a public hearing. And so again, along the way, if there's concerns about costs or financing, let me know. Like for example, in this project, how much would the lighting poles cost? We want really nice LED lights that beam down and give the kids a really, really good experience at night. Those are at a premium. And so last year, I think they were around 30 grand each, and I think this year they're around 50 grand each. So what we're seeing is that there's a lot of costs that we'll have to manage. But again, let's get through the, this most important exercise, which is the documentation to then show the other governments that look, we can re-strategize the format of this plan, give us our fields. That's what we want. So hopefully that answered it, Kasten? Another question, please.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. My name is Ray Keldron. I've been living and working in Murrieta for about 30 years now. Love the city and happy to be here. I just had one comment just to make and that was just recently, my, one of my supervisors that just moved from Temecula to Murrieta and his daughter plays soccer, had mentioned to me the difference between what Temecula has and what we have and we're we're at a disadvantage with regards to the facilities that we provide in comparison to our neighbor Temecula. So it's good to see that something like this could happen for us because our kids really need better facilities. So thank you for that and hopefully this will take care of that. I was just curious. I don't know anything about planning, so is it something of consideration to break up phase two into more phases so that you can start off with three fields or two fields? Because I noticed that they were in different, quite, pretty big different areas where you could possibly start the process sooner to show everybody that, you know, it's happening. And if three fields were built, I would assume that that's a level that people would appreciate, okay, this is really happening. I don't know if that's possible.
You know, that's what we often think about is how can we maybe bifurcate and have a quicker process? I think what's very telling about this project site is we're trying to circuitously place fields that are large in areas that have a lot of sensitivity. And so you think about this image, the big circle that says open space, that's all gnat catchers. We would never be able to get a permit for that anyway. So we know that we're stuck. And given how constrained the site is, it might be very, very difficult to do a two or three-step process because the agencies, I think, wouldn't give us environmental permits to grade because they would say, well, your dozers are near here. How do we know that's not going to affect it? And again, this is more gobbledegook. I apologize. But I think through the lens of the agencies that would issue us permits, they would see this as one project under sequel, the California Environmental Quality Act. And I think they would have a strong concern about what interim impacts would we have with phase one, phase two, phase three. But it's a good question. I would just say if, if, if things were different on the site, I think we could play that kind of ball, but it's so constrained. If you can see the creek just goes right through it. So we have to create a driveway that crosses the creek for access to the areas. And also for an efficiency metric to do grading, very expensive for those dozers, you know? Every day is like 15 grand. So I think from an economic perspective, we'll want to do it one-stop shop. But I do like the question because is there another way to look at this? There should always be. I think we're kind of locked in with the other governments on how they perceive this project. And but always a good way to try to find another way to get to the finish line. Yeah. On your point though, Temecula versus the city, you know, I think we have 53 parks. Over time, they get beat up. I know our Parks and Recs does everything they can to make sure they're maintaining our fields. I think that is one concern that we've heard is the adequacy of the fields themselves. Because when you talk about soccer, ankle rolls and other things is what you don't want to happen, right? And so that I think is the goal is to have a couple of artificial turf and a couple of normal ones so that kids have a lifelike experience, but they also have a very safe experience on these fields. But what I have heard is that no matter where in the region our youth are going to, there's some gaps in the adequacy of these park systems. Not limited to Murrieta, but we have our fair share of maintenance that, you know, we can always do better, right? But but that's fair. I'll take that information back to our director and deputy director of CSD. That's Brian and Leah, because they always want to make sure they're getting input on their existing parks and how they're running it. So. But very apt point is that we want to make sure we're maintaining our facilities just as much as we're planning for next year's activities. Any youth have a question? We're doing it for you. So I just want to say, yeah, I'm looking at the next governor, next somebody up here.
Pretty simple question. You guys probably already looked at it, but when you say about crossing Whitewood, I know with that surveying of all the speed traffic and everything, have you looked at going up and over instead of going through it? And definitely takes the safety side for the youth on that as well. I know San Diego does a lot of their walkways like that and so does Vegas. So it was just a thought I had. Didn't know if that was a thinking or if it would help reduce some time on that side of it. That's it.
Like a pedestrian bridge, right? Okay. You know, that's, we are seeing some challenges, especially if you're reading the newspapers. People just are not behaving on some of our road systems. That does have cause for concern because when we have families, we're going to have baby strollers. We're going to have different age groups. We're going to have people with mobility challenges. And then you have a Whitewood, which is on a slant. So we do have to be extremely careful in how we program that. I'm working with our traffic engineer on this because he's concerned. He wants to make sure that is there enough stopping distance, right? Because when you come around that current, you're coming south, things just pop and you're at Ruth Ellen before you know it. So we have to put a lot of analysis to even get to a point where we would accept a crossing on the street. But that's a good point. I'll see, because that's where the grants and the funds come in is there are some grants for these types of recreational issues and how do you create a safer passageway for these things? Of course, that's something that we will look into. We're in the infancy on this crossing, but I think given what we've been reading in the newspapers the last six months, you know, I think that would put a more focused element to it. Yeah. I think what we want to make sure is people just don't run across on the bottom. So we may have to come up with a fencing plan to prevent people from errantly running across a busy street. But, but I got you. I think that's a safety issue 100%. And we're looking at a larger area of Whitewood because we want to see if there's some traffic calming that we can provide to keep people at the speed limit.
Just a comment question. So with the fact that we see all the other real estate developments go up really quickly, is that just because that's their money coming in and this is a government dollars doing this?
Good point. Let me go back to the cells.
And then I'll throw my other question to have you answer too. So then, do we need to get a municipal bond put together for the sports complex itself? Or the city would put a separate tax for that?
Bonds and taxes. I'll try to deal with that question later. So not the entire city has special rules. So if you don't see a box, you're outside of that, right? Where we are seeing a lot of multifamily is in the northeastern part, like northeast of Whitewood and Clinton Keith. A lot of those areas don't have these special attributes. The core two actually goes to the northeast, which if you're ever familiar with the Anheuser-Busch property, that's the goal of getting the birds and the mammals over to that area. So, so north of French Valley, county of Riverside, that's where we're trying to get the species to. You ever seen that butterfly bridge on CK, Clinton Keith? You probably drive underneath it and never know it. There's a span that's across Clinton Keith and that was for the keynote checker spot butterfly, if I recall. So we had to figure out how to get the butterfly across a road. And that's that planted bridge that you have. So there are some special attributes. When you leave Los Alamos and you go to the northeast, if you see where that butterfly bridge is, that's where the, that's where we're supposed to plan the mammals and the avian to get to that location. So where you're, but we do have some multifamily projects that are having some challenges with the same environmental rules. They don't get any special exceptions. We thought also, well, is it because we're government and we're a fat cow in their eyes? Not necessarily. I think when they did the math, they said, any development in this area, you need to be careful on. You're adding to the problem. I didn't get the sense that the agencies were trying to take advantage of a city project. Because if that was the case, they would have to be really careful. That becomes a political nightmare later on. Because if you pick on families, you have to answer a different set of questions. But, but again, that's why I'm so elated that Congressman Isa, a newer representative of our area, I'm familiar with him from North County, San Diego, very helpful. Because if someone's helping our Gold Star families, I think that's the right person for our soccer family. So I just lend that is if we need to pull that lever, that's a gentleman that's willing to assist. Now, originally, there was a stadium proposed as part of this project. We trued that out. That would have been a significant bond commitment. And we weren't willing to do that. I think we've thrown measure T at the taxpayers and a lot of other things. So you have to be careful. How much should the public provide on this stuff? You want to be really careful. I think you've seen this with a lot of stadium projects where the new stadium guy wants the locals to pay for it all. And they say, no, go find your own private folks to fund this. And some have done that very well and others haven't. But I think we want to be conservative. COVID, we learned that our city manager made sure that we had a reserve budget. And a lot of cities didn't have that. We survived COVID because we had reserve. So you always want to make sure that you're keeping a reserve that can float you through the hard times. That's really what government is supposed to do. We're not really here for the happy times all the time. We're here for the urgent times, the emergency events, right? And I think that's when you talk about your budget, you want to be very fiscally conservative. So that's why I would be looking at grants versus the taxpayer. Right? Because you guys need your tot lots improved, need your roads paved. That's really what you're looking for is your tax dollars being spent on. If there's a minor amount that we can provide to this type of stuff, that feeds into recreation and healthy communities. But I always want to be careful. The taxpayer is the last person I want to go and knock on that door on. Because I feel like government might have more resources that we can look a different direction. But God forbid, if we get to that point, then that's going to be a very public conversation. Well, that's the selfish nature of us partnering with the guys is that hotel tax, restaurants, right? Those things usually increase with attention because it's not just your families, it's the other families that would come into the town, just like you families go to other towns and help their hotels and their restaurants. So it's a, that's very much part and parcel. The city of Murrieta has worked very, very hard the last few years to become more of a destination location. We got our Murrieta Springs Resort. We have a lot of other stuff in the hopper. And I think, I think we're wanting to take advantage of the outside money, just not take the air quality impacts and all that. But we're selfish to say, can we tax the people coming into our town? But I don't want to tax the people in my town. I'd rather have it on the backs of other people. But that is the end game focus is soccer is a very amazing, growing sport in the United States, finally. Something I've always loved since I was a kid. But I'm excited for you youth because I think finally, you know, we're seeing a lot of amazing attention. San Diego is blowing up with soccer, the whole region. These guys have a conduit to a lot of other venues and people. And I think that's where, you know, if it's going to take two years, it's two years of an investment to make sure that we come out on top, which is getting some seven amazing fields for our youth. That would be where I'm going to be going. I want to hear from a youth, an athlete. You ever wonder why government does things? You ever wonder if we have brains? These are fair questions because again, I never thought of working government when I was young. No, you're right. You don't want to hear a bunch of jargon.
Speaking of, so when's the date that my kids will be able to play on this field?
So if we can conclude this permitting process by the end of 2025, a grading usually takes about three to six months. Then we implement the fields, which is also the telco and the stormwater and all that. I would hope that after six months of getting the permits to grade, we would have completed grading, we would have had the field set. The bathrooms and stuff, that can come along the way, but I think is, we need to get the fields and the lighting going. So that, to me, that would be summer of 2026. Just because it does take a little bit of time to get the equipment out there and make things happen. But again, it'd be about a three to six month endeavor for that. But it's a very simplified project now. It's fields, parking lots and a few other little things. So it's not the most complex project to build, if you will. But again, once we get those permits, I think the rest of it can be done in a very, much more time-centric situation, so. It's not what you wanted to hear. But, but I want to be, I want to be real tonight because, no, no, no. Yeah. But again, I'm hearing kids want to play. That's, that's all that my daughter would ask of me is dad, just do your thing, but let's go play. And that's really important for us to keep hearing from our youth is that we're all pencil pushers up here, but there's an end game focus, which is your future. So that's, that's not something I ever forget. It's very important for me. Because I do like this town because of how strong the families are. It's pretty amazing. This is. This is like your women's water polo, your, your soccer, your hunting. I mean, everything in this town is about independence and the future. And I really like that vibe here. I think that, you know, you folks moving from another city to here, something must have been attractive to you. And we want to make sure that the city continues to be that beacon of light for families. I think that's what's, since we were founded, families have made this town what it is. And that's the only way we're going to get to the finish line is providing you guys with the recreation that you deserve. All right.
One thing that I can see coming with a lot of apartments and housing, there's a big population that's going to be coming to Marietta. And if we don't have certain things like the soccer fields for our kids to go and play, or they're not big enough with something like this that's already in place, planned, something like that ideally should be a focus also. You know, one of the main things to think about for the city of Marietta, where all our kids are going to be, you know, enjoying themselves playing, bringing in other cities. And then why not Marietta be the soccer? You know, instead of Temecula, us comparing ourselves to Temecula, why not us, Marietta, be the ones that they compare to, you know? So just an idea.
That's a critical point. So we're currently at around 116,000 residents. We're probably going to take this to 145. So if you can imagine that many more people in our town, that's a lot more fields that they'll have to play into. So that is going to cause us to have to buy more land in this city to put more parks. Like we have 53 now, but that 53 is for the current population. So we're going to have to continue to grow. As we have development projects, they pay fees into parkland and we get that stuff. Sometimes we can get a park out of those guys. I worked on the Marietta Hills specific plan project. It's about a thousand acre project north of us that we've annexed into the city. We got a five acre park from there that they're going to construct and hand over to us. So we're going to be looking at BMX pump tracks and pickleball courts and things that speak to our residents for that. But we constantly have to keep an eye. We're actually subject to the state law to having a minimum amount of park areas for residents. So as we grow, we have to grow the amount of park availability. And I would say that that's, you know, as we have different types of families with different types of needs, we grow in different ways. What we've noticed is that in talking with the school district, we're growing in different parts of our town than what we thought we had grown. And so we have to be careful that you shouldn't have to drive all the way across town to have a park. And so we want to make sure that we're doing place making. One gap that we have is in the centroid of our city, our transportation oriented development area. That doesn't have any parks, but we're seeing a lot of attention from multifamily. The question is, where will the kids play? They can't just have their own private tot lots forever. They have to have somewhere else to go. But this is a strong conversation that we're having at the city. As we plan and program for this growth rate to hit, to go to 143, 145, that's very important for us to do. Because we have to really look to see, do we have the land? Do we have the plans and can we construct? You know, we have a great library. Is it that we might need a second library someday? Because you think about it, a lot of people use that library and it's very popular. But that's over here. And as we grow in different parts of our city, do we need to have that conversation about how are we growing and allocating the resources to our people in those areas? But that's, that's spot on because state law tells me I got to keep an eye on those things. And we have our CSD department, Communities Services. That's their job is to make sure that we are planning for the population growth. And we thread with them very carefully on those conversations. Yeah, but it is something that we have to do. You know, again, Marietta can do it. And that's why we're, you know, taking on this project.
So I was curious about the parking. The parking currently at the park can be tough at times. And based on the kind of the diagram, I don't know how to scale that is in relation to the field looks like on the west side of White Wood. Seems to be more parking for the one field. And some fields more north and south of the proposed plan. Seems like all the parking is in the middle. Is that, I imagine that goes into the planning. But what does that look like for parking? As we imagine this complex will potentially make the club grow even more. To be able to kind of match that. And it looks like it's a pretty far walk going to the north end, to the south end of that. So I was just curious about the parking.
Spot on, I like that. So what what we don't see in this yet, but at the corner of Ruth Ellen Way and White Wood, you see it's just on the corner right there? That's probably another backup area that we'll have for parking. But we did have a conversation with the high school at the street. Let's just say we have tournaments and buses. We can have them park up there and use a shuttle that's coming down. We actually had a conversation with our tourism folks. There's a couple hotels that would help us with a shuttle bus to to get them from the high school down to the parking lot. I think there's going to be other ways that we look at shared parking techniques to get that. Because if you have a big old bus with 50 kids in it, we can stripe spaces for that, or we can allocate an offsite location for them to come down to. But parking is going to be, I think, the concern for the residents in this area. So we're going to have to get it right. The allocation is what we've done is that based upon the square footage of the fields, there's a ratio in our development code that tells us what the parking demand would be. There's never enough parking, right? These are very popular. But that is something that this isn't final, the parking plan that's shown. But that's going to be critical because even people coming from Orange County bring their vehicles. Right? It's the players that usually are on the buses on those situations. But I think the parking will probably be the preeminent comment from the neighbors. And we'll probably have to show our traffic study and and how that's going to operate. But it is going to be a big deal. But what we're going to see is we're probably going to have about 125 spaces at the intersection of Ruth Ellen. And then we'll probably do a sidewalk so they can come down because we can't have them go through the creek. So we're trying to figure out from an ADA perspective. You have to be careful what the slope is so that people have mobility. But we're working on that right now. But I would say the parking calc is is around 300 currently. I'd like to augment that much, much higher. The reason why you're having parking on different types of the streets is that we want to make sure that if there's a field being played on the west side, enough people can park on that and that would might reduce people from having to walk across that road. So we're trying to figure out a logic to park where you're having the play fields located. It won't be perfect, but we're looking at inner sidewalk connections that would help parents get to that location. I know the existing parking demand at the existing park is pretty tough. So we don't want to repeat that. Yeah, we don't want to repeat that again. We haven't have any questions from online commentators at all? Yeah, the question is, would there be a cost to parking? And no, we would not charge for parking. I think it's a public venue. So we would not have that type of situation occur here. Were you thinking of something?
Well, we'd go to tournaments like at Galloway and other places and they're charging us $12. You go to the surf complex, it's at $20. So that's one way they generate their money.
So that's kind of like, is it everyone pays that or the, just the parents that are driving in? Everybody, okay. Yeah, 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 okay. I'll think about that, but that's, that's interesting. Yeah, yeah. No, 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 it's not dumb. I would say that this is the struggle when you get into revenue streams. You know, when you look at revenue streams, even like advertising on a site, which is unique for government, would we want advertising, you know, on the site? Well, if it brought in some dollars that can offset the costs. But it's very apt because I think you see a lot of folks struggle with how to pencil things out. And so why I asked the question was, if that's a relevant ask, why don't we look into it at least? Because, you know, again, we have to come up with ways that it balances the book, right? So if someone's going to come into Marietta, spend 50 bucks on lunch, would we ask them for 12 bucks for parking? That's a very unique comment. I appreciate that because I'm going to look into it. Yeah. Yeah, so we've done our homework on parking structures and they are unreasonably expensive. Just to have a couple hundred spaces, you're looking at five, 12 million dollars. And so I'd rather put that money towards the fields, the the lighting. Because you know, when we, I watched when the amphitheater was constructed, they brought, they craned in the bathrooms. Those were prefabricated bathrooms, right? I think those were half million a pop. So if you think about the expense for an ADA compliant bathroom that's built offsite and then craned in, that is significant, right? All cities are trying to figure out, how do they get bathrooms to the public without going bankrupt? That's just that one bathroom is a lot of coin. And so that's where we have to be careful is that if there's other revenue streams, that should be on the table at least for us to look at. You know, because it's really hard to pay for these when you have ongoing maintenance and you got to replace those LED bulbs on the top. There's always some ongoing costs that the city will have to be careful with.
Yes, I'll ask the question here.
Hey, I'm Kevin. Hi. I know a lot of you have coached your kids, done my thing. So is there anything that we can do as a united front at all to speed this up? I know a lot of people are here because they're like, hey, we want instant, like, we want to see these fields tomorrow. We know that's not the answer. But is there anything that we can do as a united front? Is there funding? Is there? Talk to me, talk, talk us through that, you know? Is there something that we could do?
You know, there's nothing stronger than leveraging families in this situation. But it can almost feel sometimes like it's an over promise. Rather than try to foment a strong community type of focus. I have brought that up with the other governments. I said, would you like me to bring 2,000 families with me? Would that help? That's really the reason why we reached out to Daryl Isa was you guys would have a strong influence. I just don't know how receptive. When I show you the emblems, you see a bear, a fish, and a bird and a leaf. So again, I respect those governments because they are defending their laws, ordinances, regulations. But there may come a time and place where we need to leverage the best folks in this room to to get some more expediency. But when when we talked about the two year window, that's almost like etched in stone with the governments. We said, hey, can't we like overlap the JPR with the criteria refinement? Why can't we do this and this and that? They were not wowed by us. They just said, yeah, follow the schedule. But again, is two years will not be a patient ride. There's going to be some more conversations that will come up along the way. There will be frustration, which is normal. And so I think we'll have to test the waters is when is the time and place to throw the grenade, right? And I think, but again, respectfully is if if the families come at us and say, we've had it, what what can we do? We can have another meeting to talk about that. I'd like to have a very focused strategic conversation. Because again, I hate to, I've worked with other governments and it's almost like a you feel like you're just not getting heard. And so I'm not trying to dismiss the power of families. It's something that I think is very well done in the right moment. But there will be a time and place where I think we can exercise that.
Absolutely. I I just think like we collectively were hoping to hear that we could start breaking ground sooner. You know what I mean? But we understand the red tape, we understand all that. I was just hoping that there was something that could be done, that could be done.
Yeah, and we're not going to stop thinking. I mean, we have a lot of folks that keep coming back with ideas. But again, this is, this is a restless one. We're unhappy as a city, very unhappy. We don't like other people telling us what we can do with our land. But there's some rules and we're going to have to jump through those hoops. But but again, along the way, let's communicate through your coaches here. And and let's just see. Because again, if there's some concerns that you haven't felt the city has appropriately responded to, I'm the conduit here. But again, if we need to have another conversation, that's why I'll be working with these gentlemen. And but let's, let's, let's meet again sometime. But let's have a focused strategic conversation about what that could mean. Because I don't want to get people's hopes up and then we get deflated when nothing happens. That's sometimes what happens with these movements. But again, you guys are pretty amazing as you are. And you've been at it a while. And that, I think, will test the patience of some of the people that we're wanting to bring in for some help.
Yeah, we have a question from the community. It's just asking, is there going to be any willingness from the city to update any of the current facilities as we grow and build up the new facilities just to support the future programming and development? Because I think the idea is that seven fields is going to accommodate where we're at right now. But like you said, with growth, is there going to be any commitment to make sure that the current facilities that exist right now are going to be brought up to date and up to speed?
Yeah, so I I won't be able to answer that question because Brian and Leah operate CSD. They would know best as to what their funding is, the timing of their maintenance and replacement. But but okay, so we got hot sun here. You ever seen a tot lot after a few years? Goes from pink to white, right? You ever seen some of the basketball courts that get beat up by kids tagging them and cutting down the 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 posts? If I can get back to you and communicate back with your families on that one, because that's a very important discussion. I know it's an often asked question is, are we replacing and maintaining our existing facilities? That's what your tax dollars help contribute to. Forgive me, I'm in planning and but let me go and get the answers from these folks. And if there's something tangible that we can also, like a some sort of spreadsheet or something like that, I'll ask them if there's some more definitive information that we can provide them. Anyone have any other questions? Oh, good. I think we have an athlete. All right.
Just one question for when we start building this. In the meantime, will we be able to refurbish on Los Alamos? And will we be able to get it so we could play in a home field in Marietta and not having to go to Temecula and play in there?
Before you leave, what's your experience right now playing on that field?
Right now, it's, I've been like, we've been running in there. Sometimes I'll get a rolled ankle, but it's not bad. It's but it's grass. But I like to play on turf a lot better because it's more smooth and fast in play.
So the real stuff, you like the the real grass, okay. Yeah, the question from our athlete was, you know, are we going to be maintaining and replacing the existing Los Alamos? So the young gentleman, I'll follow up on that as well. Our parks maintains a replacement schedule. And so I need to get those folks to get that information back to you all. Forgive me for not having that in front of you today, but I'll readily get that information. But yeah, I mean, that's what I I consider is to be an athlete, you have to have an assurance that it's safe, right? Because injuries, as I'm having right now, can take months out of your life. And especially when you're in high school, you don't have months, right? But injuries, injuries are part of sport. But when it's something that could have been maybe prevented, that's, I could tell that's a very, very key concern. But let me get on that one because I think that's a common question from anyone that would use any park. Is, is it safe? And when the heck are you going to replace that turf, right? So again, is it sod or is it fake grass that you're on right now? Yeah, okay, you want the real turf, okay. Yeah, we'll follow up on that one because I want to see what what their plan of action is. But thank you for that question. We'll get back to you on that one. I think just size. I think some of the, forgive me, coaches, I think some are the professional scale and some I think are for training. I think that because I don't think we could fit seven perfectly sized facilities, right? But we know that we need some training fields. And I think that's why you're seeing two different color variations and two different sizes. different color variations and two different sizes. If that's accurate.
Some of them are, the light green ones are sort of 120 yards by 85, which is FIFA size. The other ones, the other ones are probably around 110 to 70, 74. They're going to be, they're going to be full size, but obviously there's some, if you look at some of the fields, they have the amount they want to play. So, but the biggest ones you can get in FIFA are 120 by 85, and then the others will be around 110, 115 to 74, 74 wide. So they'll be, they'll all be full size fields.
And on top of that, we're looking at a combination of turf and sod though, so fake grass and real grass. I think that's what we're going to be allocating. In this state, we have to be careful with our water use and so that's part and parcel of what we're talking about. We found that fake grass, you actually waste more water cleaning it than real grass, but the state doesn't want to accept that. So that's just something that I chuckle over because I think it's better to have real grass. That's the safest place for kids. But we'll get back to those responses on our maintenance program for your families. I think I saw someone else trying to raise their hand.
As the original proposal, there had been a facility, like an indoor facility for players. Is, I can't see like that far, is this, is that still proposed?
You know, some of the things that we would like to program is like a weight room in an office area because kids do need that time, right? Especially if they're injured on the field or they need a little bit of attention from their trainers, massage and other characteristics, storage for their equipment. Those are the things that we are going to be looking to program in there. It's a little more skeletal what we have right now. We're just trying to get to the agency permits, but during the next two years, then we'll be focusing on some of the amenities that are very centric to the athletes. But yeah. The yellow area would be concessions or like a weight room area? We'll probably put a totlot because when you think about a long day with families, you don't bring just your athlete, you bring your other infants and stuff. So we also want to make sure that this is conducive to family events. That's why we want to have like sidewalks where you can walk around. So if we have a stroller and there's intermission or the end of the game, families can actually peruse the site itself. So we're trying to make sure that this isn't just fields. We want to make sure that it speaks to the needs of the families that come here.
Now, restaurant with beer and wine. Well, like Big League drinks, that's how they keep a lot of their souvenirs. It comes from, $5 a charge.
Yeah, that stuff will come, but I think what we're looking at is, let's get the bare bones of the athletic portion of this one. When I think of alcohol and youth though, there's a time and place for that. And I want to make sure that we're also messaging our youth very carefully. I think what we, I'm very proud of working in a city where we banned marijuana. In the past, we've regulated smoking. I think we almost banned alcohol 50 years ago. So I think if you're going to focus on families, there's, again, there's a time and place for a lot of these amenities. I would look for a revenue stream like that and I would look to take advantage of the other people coming into town. But when I think about the youth and how much we're having a problem with vape pens and all this other crap, sorry, all this other stuff in this society is, I want to keep this very vanilla and make sure it's family centric. Because I think sometimes you get audacious and you want to do a lot of great things, but I think that takes us away from the core. And again, is, when I think of youth, I think of that innocence, that hard work, that blood, sweat and tears that they all do. And I think that the more adults mess with that image is, it can be contrary. We've known that the more and more that students walk past alcohol advertising or cigarette advertising, the more likely they might think that that's cool. And so we call that safe routes to school. We want to make sure that you're not inundated with advertising of things that really should not be at your age gap. But you can see a lot of cities where I think on average, a kid walks by four advertisements for cigarettes and alcohol on a daily walk. I'm proud to say that we don't have too much of that here, but again, as even guys like me, we like our IPA, I want to make sure there's a balance on that one. But again, is, is there other revenue streams that we can help to do this? That's what we'll look at and if it does include restaurants?
That was my main point.
Yeah, yeah.
Advocating for children, their mother, their father.
No, 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 no. No, I get it. No, no, forgive me, is, is, no, it's not a bad thing, it's not.
I just, I look at that, it is, they do protect, do, you know, at night, a lot more adult sports, per softball, baseball. Soccer, you know, where you're trying to use the field to practice, so I get.
No, there's no bad ideas. A lot of times I'm trying to balance the end game focus on that one, so nothing's off the table, but we'll be careful what we put on the table. No, it's fine. It was a good comment.
Well, all of a sudden, we're talking marijuana, marijuana, or you can.
But, but has our society not changed so much in the last five years? It's crazy, right? It's crazy how much change we've seen. But again, let's not forget that.
Starts with a restaurant at the soccer field, nice.
No one's getting in trouble here. But again, is, you know, can we deliver seven fields so that our youth can do what they do best? That's the goal.
So you said the 24 months, but you were hoping to start grading before that 24 months runs out?
No, the, so the two-year would be the end of 2025 and then January of the 2026 would be that six-month process of doing the grading and getting all the other stuff in.
When is the city looking at the civil bids on that?
So that's what I talked about jumping ahead on. So in the summer, fall of 2025, that's when we should get ahead of that work. Yeah, yeah. Because, you know, to process a grading plan, even if you're government, it still takes, you have to look at your drainage study, your stormwater analysis, site distance, it's, yeah, it's, you engineer?
He's a land surveyor.
Okay, okay. That's crazy work, it's tough. Yeah. Sir?
Will there be like a, kind of like a heads up for local contractors for this project as well? Like, you know, how sort of like your own contractor?
Does the city like have a handful of preferred contractors that they use? Like period development members, like construction, like all the licenses?
No, it would be, it would go out for bid. When government does these things, I think it's prevailing wage. So we would put it out for bid and, yeah, and then, yeah, and then we would get proposals. And so we would select the proposal that best fit the cost structure of the requirement. But yeah, I mean, if we can get a local and they get the bid, fantastic. We'd like to keep our money local, right? But it does. You know, we got a lot of amazing people in this town. So yeah, if we can keep our dollars local, that's a great goal. But in government, we, there's a fairness to that process and that we'll go through that formal process with the public. How's everybody doing? Sir?
So, this meeting and presentation in the last one we did a couple years ago, how else does the outside, besides this MSA community, does our community know what, that this thing is happening? I'm just curious if it's promoted in any kind of way outside of these meetings here.
You know, I would say we haven't demonstrated a lot of progress because of the connection we had with the agencies. So I would want to make sure I'm broadcasting this at the right time. I know that we do use our website, our public information officer to disseminate our projects. I think as we get closer to the two-year window, this will become a more common discussion point in social media and at council meetings, I'm sure. There's going to be a lot of anticipation. But I think that might be why we had tonight's meeting is that it's been two years and it's been kind of quiet and I think a lot of questions, deservingly, have been asked by your families and that's, but you know what? I think that's where government has to get sharper is leveraging social media and these types of venues to make sure that the public really understands. Because if they don't, they start to maybe think of something else. And again, is, I don't, I don't want to give you the truth serum too hard tonight, but if I don't, I think a lot of folks would feel like, again, what the heck is the city doing here? But yeah, I think is, we'll leverage a little bit more of that public outreach, more so in the future. But I would say that we haven't just had a lot to brag about because of the agency snafu. But I'm hopeful that that will be a thing of the past and that in two years, we'll have something extremely positive to share with the public.
Hopefully before then, you can create excitement by promoting the progress and the reality of this event happening so that when you have a meeting like this, it's not the president of the MSA trying to convince everybody to get here, but it's everybody going like, yes, we want to hear about this. Not to mention, thinking back on the gentleman, he said, hey, we're ready to rally for you. What can we do? That would be the perfect opportunity to create, to get other people excited about what's coming to the city, not just when it's here, but actually about what Marietta is doing in the near future to bring families and to get the soccer community, but also family community to want to stay as well as want to come and be a part of something so special.
Point well taken. Yeah, that's, actually I'll be following up on that shortly because we do have that ability. The word excitement is a good term. I like that. But thank you for sharing that. That's something I'll follow up on with our PIO.
So on that point, I would caution you, because I've sat in this chamber at city council meetings monthly. And while that's a great idea, there has been consistently for the past, well, for the past 10 or 12 years for a hockey game, but in the past five years, a ground slow of residents for a pump track and/or pickleball courts. So if the council or the city starts to advertise for soccer, you may now have competing interests from other families coming to the council, lobbying the council, competing for those dollars. So just something for you guys to keep in mind when that time comes. I mean, I agree with Jared, absolutely, there will be a time for it, but as you guys start to strategize, that's something to think about because I would, I'm certain that that would happen if the city started to advertise or push out on social media about community input and, you know, there's, they're starting the Trails Master Plan. They're going to take, they're going to have community meetings on that, which maybe some of you attend that and start talking or listening to start to strategize at that time.
Obviously, we want to rely on you on helping us, you know, when that timing would go, but I think it would be something that would be beneficial for the city also, when that time is right.
You guys ever met the pickleball people?
Oh, yeah.
Interesting. Yeah, yeah. But Cassin's right is that what government often deals with is the competing interests of that small pie. And every city across the country does not have enough pickleball courts, so they're inundated with that request. But we have a lot of recreators and a lot of athletes, so we try to balance all those voices. The pump track is what I'm hearing for years. That's a big one because youth need to ride their bikes as well and they need a safe place to do it. But yeah, I think we need to pick and choose some battles, but you're right. The more one team gets fervent, the other, the other folks might feel the need to compete with that. But what I do know though is that the soccer project is important to our city council and that's what I'm going to run with. It will take some time unfortunately, but I have made a commitment to my bosses that I'm going to do everything I can to get this thing done. It helps me, you know, see the young athletes in the audience. That always gives me a good reminder of why I come to work and along the way, if anyone feels that I'm not doing my job, let's talk about it. Give some feedback over here, call me up. Because again, you guys are working really hard on behalf of your kids to give them something, right? And that's not lost on me. I want to make sure that you don't think that I'm just going to go back to my desk and tear this up. This is something I need to get done. This is really my job to do and I do look forward to working on this project as I have been for like the last two years. I know it's getting a little late here, but no rush out the door. This is City Hall. Again, I would like to see you guys come back in different forms. Again, the City Hall is exciting. We have a lot of stuff going on. If you've never been to our library, go there. It's a really amazing place. They actually have a seed inventory. You could check out seeds, plant them, and when you grow the plant, you bring back the seeds that you grew. And so that's a pretty cool thing if you've ever wanted to get into that. But I love this city because we have a lot of exciting things to do. We got to get this done and that's my commitment to you all. But unless there's any other questions, then I think we'll adjourn for the evening. But thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to come down to City Hall. It's very nice to meet everyone. I have my business cards in the foyer, grab one. And again, if something comes to mind later on, let's talk about it. Because again, tonight is a lot of information I'm throwing at you. I don't expect everyone to just whip it up, but if something comes to you as an urgent question or a concern, let's talk about it. I'll be following up with these gentlemen on the outstanding questions about the maintenance cycles for our fields because that's a pretty important question I've heard more than once, so.
Thanks, Jared.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks, guys. Hey, you're Mariettans, man. I'm really proud of you. You guys are really great families. Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you.